I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council on a work session. It is Monday, it is Monday, January 8th, 2024. Maybe I thought that's the right one, I'd be better off. And as our city recorder, please call role.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Aspin?
Here.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Starr?
Here.
Counsel Duran?
Here.
Counsel Cross?
Counsel Cross is excused this evening.
Youth Counsel Whitard?
And he is also excused. The work sessions are optional for our youth counselors. And their teachers keep them really busy with like studies and things. I know, imagine that. So we have two items we're going to be working on this evening. So the one to pull up right now is for the right-of-way ordinance, which will match what we're seeing on the screen. And if we could, if we do turn down lights, just do it mildly, we need to be able to see to take notes. So maybe just a touch.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask Mr. Wood because I'm not allowed to touch those buttons.
Okay.
Oh, oh, Don.
That's Don.
I didn't see, I didn't see you over there, Don.
All right. Okay, is that a good balance? You guys can see and we can see.
Not allowed.
All right. And Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. We're here to revisit the right-of-way ordinance. And I'm going to start back where you all started, which was in December of 2021, when you had a special counsel come and present, Spencer Parsons from Bury, Elsner, and Hammond. And the bulk of the material that's in this presentation is from the letter, which should also be on your desk. And it's just put in this presentation. So probably for most of you, this will seem extremely basic, but that's where we wanted to start, is just kind of from ground level up. And just got a few extra slides. So here, let's just talk about where we've been. December 2021 is when the council first had a work session that talked about the merits of using a franchise model versus a right-of-way ordinance model. And after deliberation, the council directed staff to proceed with making a right-of-way ordinance temp, model or template. In June of, six months later, June 21st of 2022, the council voted to award a procurement contract to draft that right-of-way ordinance with Right-of-Way Consultants LLC. And then we had elections, and we have new council members in January of 2023. And the draft ordinance got to us as in staff in, I want to say, the February timeframe. And Shannon and I went a couple of rounds back and forth with the franchisees, trying to get some feedback that. And eventually, eventually, on April 17th, the draft ordinance was failed to get approval. But we contacted council and asked if you wanted to revisit it at some point. And nearly all of the council said, yes, we'd like to revisit it again. So that's what brings us to this point of the discussion. From just an economics perspective, I wanted to talk about what makes for good tax policy. And that, this particular one applies to the user benefit principle. In other words, those who use it, those who benefit from it, pay for it. And they pay according to the usage of it. So if you pay more than, or if you use more, then you pay more for it. And so I didn't want to use the term fair tax because there's, there's some political connotations about it. But if I can reuse those words in a sentence, I would say that it's arguably, that's the most fair tax, is one that's based on how much you use the good. The opposite of that would be a redistributive cost where people pay based on some other measure, but it isn't necessarily related to the amount of usage that you have with a particular good or service. So we have right-of-way fees because the, these utilities and other companies, for-profit companies and, and not-for-profit companies, use the public space. And it's not just the city's space, it is the public space. They own all of the city's rights-of-way. So there's inconveniences, a reliance on the public domain to be able to make money. And there's a cost to that, there's wear and tear for all of us who've been coming to City Hall every day for the last two or three weeks. There's been the curb cutting just a couple of blocks to the west of us, which have had to route traffic one way through. And when those curb cuts and patches are done, then there's freeze thaw cycles, and those cracks have to be sealed, or if they don't, then they start to tear apart and the pavement gets what they call alligatored in the breakup. And at that point, your whole foundation is, is spent. So there's a wear and tear. There, I found a video, it's really, you know, hard to find public information on a lot of things. And this is admittedly something that as governments, we're not very good at because that we, we sort of take advantage of the fact that we have a monopoly on what most of we do, so we don't have to educate as much, but when we really should. So trying to find a good example of education of this is, was difficult. But there was a video that I found on Oregon City, City of Oregon City's page, but it was done by the City of Eugene 10 years ago. And I thought it's, it's a really well-done video that I thought would play. And again, this is really basic, probably stuff that you all understand, but for the benefit of the recording, I think it's a good information.
Every day, we make use of our streets and public rights-of-way, though most folks don't give it a lot of thought. But like the airwaves used by radio and TV, the streets and public rights-of-way in our cities belong not to any one person, but to all of us. Our publicly-owned streets and rights-of-way are primarily managed and maintained on behalf of all users by Oregon local governments. Our streets and rights-of-way surround and connect us. Each of us uses this unique resource when we go to work, access goods or services, pick up our kids from school, or visit family and friends. We use utility networks in our rights-of-way to cook our food and heat our homes. Besides water, plumbing, and electricity, our streets also host critical pathways to phones, computers, televisions, and the global internet. Whether the connections are wired or wireless, commercial businesses depend on the people's property to deliver connections that allow us to stay in touch with each other and the world. We also depend on our streets and property to keep us safe, healthy, and free from harm.
Of course, keeping streets in good repair isn't free. There's a cost for maintaining all of this, not to mention coordinating the work of many different users to minimize the headaches for us all.
Not only does it cost money to keep the public right-of-way accessible and useful for everyone, but many of the users are private companies, for-profit companies who pay rent to we, the people, in various forms, primarily to Oregon local governments. The streets and rights-of-way are our collective property as taxpayers, right? Since the public is the ultimate landlord, cities manage the people's property on the public's behalf. After all, it wouldn't be very responsible to let private companies use our streets for free, would it?
Charging rent for use of public facilities by private people is nothing new here in Oregon. For years, we've been doing this, been managing it because of the Oregon Constitution of home rule, also under city charters and state law. We are charged with managing the public's right-of-way. Now, the voters expect us to make sure that they get a proper return for the use of their publicly-owned right-of-ways, and that's what we do.
Fortunately, our partners in federal and state government have long understood the importance of ensuring rent is paid for public property. And many federal statutes reinforce this critical principle.
Federal funds were used to map out the Oregon Trail. In other words, management of our public right-of-ways started with our early pioneers to ensure transportation network benefited everyone, not just our commercial interests.
What was once a dirt track now includes essential services, water, sewer, gas, and communications.
Internet access is our newest essential service, connecting us to jobs, education, and health. Cities must ensure that this critical service is as available as other essential services are using public rights-of-way.
It takes a lot of planning to make sure that when work is done on one part of the street, it creates as little impact as possible on all the other uses and users. And care must be taken to assure all service needs are met equally and fairly. These services need maintenance, repairs, and additions. More and more wires, pipes, and cables are being added to our right-of-way to meet the needs of ever-changing technology. Even wireless phones now increasingly need right-of-way antennas and facilities to connect to backhaul landlines. All of this has to be handled and coordinated with as little disruption to traffic and businesses as possible. Municipalities must also respond to safety issues. In any construction project, access for emergency vehicles needs to be planned.
These additions and repairs to the right-of-way are happening all the time. The number of requests for construction permits has increased dramatically, and yet the fee structure has not changed hardly at all.
Oregon communities are very different from each other. That's why a construction schedule for a ham...
Might not work in Beaverton at all.
Wait, did we mention that none of this is free? If each company had to spend the time and money to buying space to lay their pipes, wires, and cables, the cost of providing their services would increase considerably. This compensation may take different forms depending on the community, but all of it is returned to the ultimate owner, the public, in the form of critical municipal services such as police, fire, parks, and street repairs.
Every so often, there are proposals to cut back Oregon right-of-way fees, or change the law to make one size fit all in distinctly different Oregon communities.
What works in Portland may not work well here in Cottage Grove. We have to keep the faith of the citizens and taxpayers and make sure that both the right-of-ways are protected for all users and that the public is fairly compensated.
After all, the streets and rights-of-way in Oregon...
Belong to everyone!
Yes, to bring a smile to some of your faces here, recognize some of the people in the videos. A few of my friends in the videos too. All right, so this will be in the minutes, and that link will be out there. Maybe we can push that out on our social media channels for education, since it's out there in the public domain. Okay, so getting into the meat of the letter that you, the council received in 2021, just going to try to go over this. The franchise is an agreement between the government and a company for the use of that space. And like was pointed out in the video, if the public right-of-way was not accessible, and let's say I, electric company or a cable company had to purchase easements from individual property owners, it would be extraordinarily expensive. So using the public right-of-way is the most economical means for most of these companies to deliver services. The traditional way we've done that is through franchise agreements. The alternative to that, which is a newer trend, is by ordinance or by city law, which would require any providers to get licenses instead of an agreement. A utility rights-of-way ordinance is a tool used by increasingly a number of cities. Oregon City has passed a right-of-way ordinance, West Lynn, Clackamas County, Hillsborough, to name a few. And its intent is to replace the franchise agreements, but we're seeing some examples where there's both franchise agreements and ordinances make sense. So I'll address that in a little bit. So first, I want to talk about some of the limitations and benefits of franchise, franchise agreements, and then we'll kind of go into some of the limitations of the right-of-way ordinance, try to give you a fair representation of both. So one of the challenges with franchise agreements is that it limits the city's ability to make regulations that become effective immediately. Most, since the terms are agreed upon in the franchise agreement, if the city wants to make changes procedural or in the way we regulate them, it typically has to be done at the new, in the new contract. So if it's a 10-year franchise agreement, and we have changes that come up now, or five years into it, we have to wait till the end of the agreements. And they have to be negotiated to be mutually agreed upon. So just graphically, you know, I see things, I like to see things visually. So just looking at utility A, B, C, and D here, they're all, their franchise agreements all expire at different times and at different periods during that 11-year time period. We have different procedural changes that need to be made, but we can't bring them on all at the same time. We have to bring them on separate as each agreement expires and gets renewed. So one of the arguments about franchise agreements is that we have some paying and some that are not paying. We have these franchise agreements with Northwets, Natural Gas, Portland General Electric, Salem Electric, Comcast, CenturyLink, and our, in our enterprise funds, Water and Sewer pay the franchise fee also because they're doing business in the city's right-of-way. Not paying is, we have a lot of free riders in the system, and mostly the attorney identifying them as the telecom industry, but also competitive cable providers and competitive electric suppliers. And this is something I just learned, me, sitting down with some of our utilities with, that we have franchise agreements with larger, big-box corporations in our community. I'll use one that's not in our community as an example, and then you can extrapolate it to ones that are. But for instance, Walmart is a large corporation. Because of the size of that corporation aggregated, they are allowed to buy energy on the private market, not from, they don't have to buy all their energy from PGE or Salem Electric. So they are paying the franchise fee just for the transmission cost through PGE or Salem Electric, and they're not paying the franchise fee on their actual electric cost. So this is, again, is learned from our electric providers, and they said they'd be interested in helping us to identify those free riders.
Just a quick question with that. So you talk about retailers, is that also true of large industrial or commercial ventures as well as the specific to retail corporations?
It's a good question. I don't know the line of demarcation of when they're allowed to provide, when they're allowed to buy on the private market, or when they have to. But I suppose there's, we'll find that out at what point, what energy usage they're required to buy from the provider, and when they get to a certain point, they're allowed to go on the open market.
Because I think in, just as a follow-up, in Primeville, because of the huge energy usage by the data farms that they have there, they actually run it through a city utility. So that's part of the deal that they work out for them, but they, they've made that very specific for the development of that land and so forth, but it doesn't sound like that's universal, possibly. Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we keep going? Okay. Back to you.
Okay. And so those who are, one of the things the federal law says is that you can't make a competitive disadvantage to a business because of the, a franchise fee. So we have paying customers, paying utilities, that are put at a competitive disadvantage because their costs increase. And the ones not paying are at a competitive advantage because they aren't paying. They don't have to add that to their fee. So this right-of-way, a right-of-way ordinance would put everybody on an evil or an equal playing field, all paying the same fee set by ordinance. Conformity is another reason, through permitting, restoration, relocation requirements, meaning the, how we repair the road, if standards change during a term of a franchise, the, of how we require the road to be rebuilt, then that's something that would have to be mutually agreed upon if it was mid-contract or renegotiated at the end. Insurance requirements bonding and the payment of a privilege tax. Privilege tax, again, being the right to do work on the public's domain. Compensation for equally across utilities that use the city's right-of-way. And of course, there's, there's time and effort. We use special counsel to negotiate the contracts, so there's time and effort to do that as each one expires and we have to renegotiate them. Okay, so let's switch sides of the argument, take a different point of view. And this would be the commonly argued disadvantages of right-of-way ordinances. So maybe a case for franchise fees. There's a perception that's a new tax, because if there are free riders, then they are not paying a franchise fee. If that is imposed on them, then, as it came up in the discussion we had six months ago, they, somebody might see a new charge on their cell phone bill or whatever other alternative cable provider. So it's not only perceived, but yes, it would, in fact, people would see that as a new cost. And that goes back to the user benefit principle, is do we think it's fair that those who use more should pay more, or do we see it as a redistribution? One of the arguments is that in your franchise agreements, you have a built-in dispute resolution processes, and that's maybe a little more challenging to do as in by ordinance, but not necessarily impossible. But those, the defense against legal challenges is one-sided reason why right-of-way ordinance might be weaker than a franchise agreement. And this is really similar to the other one, but the city would be giving up certain breach of contract remedies if the license is not considered an agreement. Another one is that cable operators are governed, governed by federal law, which requires a franchise fee, so, and cities must comply. So we know regardless, even if we do go the route of a right-of-way ordinance, we would still have to have a franchise agreement with cable provider. Another argument was there's time spent upfront, although having a draft, much of that work is behind us. But there's definitely, there's time either spent negotiating all the individual franchise agreements, or time creating a ordinance that tries to address everything, which is challenging. This is something we heard, it, it actually isn't in the letter from the attorney back in 2021, but it's something we heard from the franchisees. And what they like is certainty, that they understand their obligations for the term of the franchise, and they can make plans and financial forecasts based on those. It ensures that the procedural requirements that we have won't change without their mutual consent. So like any business, the more of certainty involved, generally, we like that, not only in business, but in, in our government too.
Counsel Kohler has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager Brown. So once we have a franchise agreement, can we not make amendments to it?
We can make amendments to it, but they have to be mutually agreed upon since it's an agreement.
So it's like renegotiating the contract in the middle of the road?
Right, yeah. And anytime you open up a contract, then the whole contract is...
So there would need to be some pretty legitimate reason to be doing that?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, typically, you have to find an interest on both sides. You know, one-sided bargaining is, is always difficult.
I have another question.
Follow up?
Not related to that one exactly, but you talked about the user benefit principle, where those that use the right-of-way things would be paying for it versus a redistribute cost, so like the, the park's fee is kind of like a redistribute cost.
Yes.
It's not everybody uses the park.
Yep. As are police. Yep.
Thank you.
When you need it, yep, that's the difference.
So this is just a chart where I'm trying to put all these forces, driving forces and restraining forces against it, and you kind of have to kind of weigh them. I tried to proportion, this is not scientific, but I tried to, some of these are more important to them. Perception is a big, is very strong restraining force. A driving force for the city, uniformity, and trying to get all of our utility providers under the same language and stuff is a driving or force. So some of these are more important, some of these are less important. The length of these bars is non-scientific, very, the touch of my mouse, so. So back then... So, back then, the special counsel said, "On balance, this office generally recommends adoption of a right-of-way ordinance as a more effective and efficient tool to ensure fair and equal access to and use of the right-of-way, as well as ensuring the city receives reasonable compensation for such use from all users." That was their recommendation, then. So, we have been looking at it as a one side or the other, doing a franchise or a right-of-way ordinance. And, in speaking with the utility providers, one option that they put out there was an "and" option, a franchise fee, a franchise agreement, and something that wraps up everything else and ties up all the other loose ends, encompasses all others. So, where we ended up, the draft of the ordinance took a long time to write. Our franchisees did not feel that there was adequate back-and-forth between the city and our organizations, our organization. The policy issue crossed councils, which I think was important, because it was, you know, some of you weren't there at the original decision was made, and so that makes it challenging. And then lastly, this "and" course, franchise "and" in ordinance, really wasn't explored, at least at the time I was here for this part of it. No, it may have been before I got here. So, recommending is that we continue to look at this "and" option of franchise agreements, which you've given us direction to go ahead and renegotiate the ones that are expiring in the next five months. We also, though, work with the utilities to get feedback on the current form of the right-of-way ordinance, and look at what other communities that have already done this, Hillsborough Fran example has done this "and" solution, franchise agreements and right-of-way ordinance. And so, I'd love to go meet with them and talk about, you know, what their reasonings were, and look at their template, well, how their model, and how it's working for them. And, again, spend more time with the franchisees, talking with them and getting their feedback. So, I think that is the end of the slides. I know I'm always one PowerPoint slide from greatness.
All right.
Back to you.
All right, thank you very much. At our last council meeting, when we were discussing franchising, and we had PGE, Salem Electric, and Northwest Natural representation here, talked about the "and" option. And, tonight is to help us to start to wrap our heads around what this is going to look like going forward, and a framework for engaging with our current utilities, the ones that are, the ones that were here last Monday, the ones that Comcast that have some specialties, and to build a framework where we understand how this is working, and where the opportunities are, and how we can be adaptive going forward as technology continues to evolve. And I think that's where some of this opportunity for the "and" appears to be an opportunity, especially with Hillsborough. And, are there other options that have gone to an "and" out there?
That was the one they cited, but I would talk to Wendy, she seemed to be knowledgeable about the ones that had gone there.
I think she was involved in a lot of those. So, that would be fantastic. Questions or comments?
I have a list.
You have a list? We'll just kind of go down the line? Okay, Counsel Reed, anything?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, Counsel Housman?
A single question, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, best I understand, as far as whom the city would be negotiating with on these franchises or within a right-of-way framework, we have a lot of the large publicly traded corporations, Northwest Natural, PGE, Comcast, Verizon, so on and so forth. Large corporations are large corporations, are large corporations are large corporations, right? They all, they have their fundamental differences in the service that they operate, but in some ways, because of their size and their heft, we have an idea of how to play with them. Salem Electric strikes me as the biggest outlier because of its cooperative framework. Are there any other partners with whom their business framework and their size, because we know Salem Electric's not a major player in, at the same size and scale as PGE, any of those other entities come to mind when thinking about pursuing this "and" model here?
You're right, Salem Electric is that cooperative model is unique. I, you know, there was another, on the east side of the state, another cooperative internet provider, Farmers Co-op. And, I don't know if they were there when Counsel Kohler was on that side of the state or not, but they were fairly big telecom co-op, but, I don't know, did any of them come to your mind, Attorney Johnson?
Okay, no, I appreciate that, just, they strike me as the only immediate outlier as far as if we're exploring the "and" option, whom we may be attending to with a little bit greater care. So, I wanted to call that out.
Yeah.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And, last Monday, Salem Electric and PGE representation were here for the conversation side-by-side. Counsel Kohler, anything?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Counsel President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just out of curiosity, did, were PGE, just out of recognition that they felt like there wasn't a lot of engagement with them in the process last time, were any of the, I'll call them the big three, that I'm familiar with, PGE, Northwest Natural, or Salem Electric, were they invited to be here tonight to participate if we had any questions?
I did, we did, when I met with them, maybe about a month ago, I did tell them we had this work session, and they, and then I communicated back with them, because I was contemplating taking that request from last week on the 18th of December, and I felt it was rushed, and often when I do that, things don't turn out well, so I decided to wait until the first meeting in January. So, I contacted them, I said, "I know this is just a week before we do our work session about it, but we're still going to take it to them and take it to the city council to be able to move forward with your franchise agreement." So, they knew that we were talking about it tonight.
Okay, I mean, I did, like officially, they knew we were talking about it, but I'm just curious if there was an official invite to be here in case we had any questions for Wendy, since she's been involved in it, just, like, did we officially say, "Hey"?
They didn't get a card from me.
It's not about a card, but it's like, there's a difference between saying we're having a work session, and you're invited to attend, and we'd like...
Yeah, it would be fair to say, I didn't, I didn't say, "Hey, please come."
Okay.
That'd be fair.
Mr. Johnson had...
Well, I was just going to say that if the result last week had been different, they would have been here, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, we didn't think about inviting them as a resource. I think that their concerns are kind of resolved, so, otherwise, I think they would have...
Okay, thank you. See? Thank you. We heard that the agreement timeframe on the franchise agreements is 10 years. Where is that from? Is it just because that's what we've always done? Because that's not one of my favorite phrases. And, so I'm just curious if there's issues with things potentially coming up in the middle, you know, the offset changes that we make in one, but we can't make in another because it's 10 years. Why 10 years?
That's historic precedence.
So, it's what we've always done?
I was trying to...
I caught you, yeah.
But, I think there perhaps is some ways that we can address that in the franchise agreements. It may be more challenging, but to say, if, you know, in the language, we might be able to say, if there are the new standards that are made in the right-of-way ordinance for restoration, that the franchise agreement recognizes that the city's right to do that. I think we can try to address some of those issues.
So, kind of as a follow-up to that, what are some of the examples of potential changes that might come up in the middle of a franchise agreement that we would want to change, but we can't because it was 10 years old, or 10 years long?
Yeah, so, like a streetscape might be something that would, might change it. The "and," the, let's see, our engineers come up with a new road base standard that changes, not very often, fortunately, but let's say they come up with, "We need 10 inches of base instead of eight inches," and that's the type of thing, the restoration and rebuild standards that were cited in the letter from 2021.
Okay, I'm just going to keep going, is that okay?
Follow-up.
My list, thank you. I'm assuming that when we say telecom, because we have CenturyLink that is on the paying franchise, and they're telecom, same with Comcast, they provide phone, what else is considered in telecom? Would that be like AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile?
Yeah, those certainly would be. There's another one that is, has approached us that is making progress up through Salem, called Zipley Fiber, and they've been burning up Shannon and his phone line and email, and they're, so they're putting fiber in the ground. Interesting, a lot of your cable providers, like Comcast, Xfinity, they may have a fiber to a box in the neighborhood, but yet you're still getting a coax line, so it's being throttled down to the house. So, but some of these providers now are options, alternatives to cable and internet and telephone are going to the house with fiber, especially in new developments, it's an easy change, but retrofitting is expensive.
You, you mentioned in your presentation that there's costing for the negotiating of the franchise fee agreements. What is the, like, that's a great, you know, yes, we know there's a cost, but what is that? Because that's kind of a vague statement.
Mr. Johnson, do you know how much we spent on attorney fees in the past to negotiate in a contract?
No.
Order of magnitude?
No, unfortunately, the only ones that I was involved in when I came in-house were the gas and electric, and at that point, I did not, I did not engage outside counsel. Moving forward, we are, because I just kind of want to be careful if we're going to be stuck for 10 years, and have somebody with a little more expertise. But I don't have an answer for the question about what the cost would be. I can try to get that.
Yeah, hourly, the cost is $300 to $400 an hour.
Yeah, how many, I mean, then it would be, how many hours?
Right. I'll try to get that.
Thank you. What is, you talked about uncertainty with the ROW ordinance. Can we get examples of what that uncertain, those uncertainties are?
If I can, I think from the provider's point of view, with a franchise ordinance, both sides are locked in, and by the way, with regard to the 10 years, although that is tradition, I can, I can take a pretty good guess at that. The, there's no way I would, if, from the city's point of view, I would prefer to go five. From the provider's point of view, they would probably like to go 20, because once they lock something in, there's more likelihood that we would change something than they would. But, back to the issue of the, I'm sorry, what was the question? I got sidetracked on myself.
What is the, in the presentation, it listed uncertainties.
Oh, right.
What are the examples of that?
Yeah, so the uncertainties is from the provider's point of view. From the provider's point of view, they're wondering, "Well, gee, you have an ordinance, it's unilateral, it's one-sided, are you going to make a change in that next year or five years from now?" Unlike a franchise where we couldn't make a change. So, I think that's, the uncertainty is from their side.
And the last one for now...
I think Adam has a follow-up.
I think I may have a good example, though. A big issue for them is undergrounding of cable, or, and so there's, in the current franchise agreement, I think there's conditions in which they have to underground it, but if we were able to, if we had, say, you know, everything now has to be underground, and that would maybe a change to what's in the current agreement. So, that would be probably the best example, I think.
Okay, thank you. And my last one for now. Why, curious, when we had that contractor, that consultant who specialized in right-of-way, I'm curious why the "and" wasn't brought up then? If they were an expert consultant?
It was brought up. The issue is, once you start to let providers go to franchise, the ones who aren't going to franchise are going to point to that. And then, you know, if you're trying to do a right-of-way model, if you don't have anybody under the right-of-way model, because they're all the franchise, you've defeated your purpose. Frankly, I think that this, at least with regard to what I'll just call the traditional providers, the gas and electric, this makes some sense, to have a franchise, that's what they're used to, they're pushing very hard for it. I don't think it, I think other types of non-gas and electric utilities are going to have a difficulty saying, "Well, gee, you know, we should get that too, because they're, you know, the gas and electric got it." Well, you're, those are totally different. But if you start going to even more than that, then you're going to have a question of how many are going to be left under the right-of-way ordinance. So, back to your point, it was discussed, we discussed that with our consultant and our outside counsel, but, you know, that wasn't the recommendation.
Okay, because I don't...
That issue came up...
Maybe my memory is foggy, but I don't recall that being a big discussion item here.
No, you are, you are correct about that. That wasn't a big discussion, but that issue was raised during the, during the two or three council meetings we had, it just was not a big discussion item, that's all.
Okay, but it's, what I'm hearing is it's a, now it's coming back as a recommendation or something to look at.
Yeah, and that came from...
Wendy.
Wendy, from PGE, and it was just upon the completion of Hillsborough doing it. So, it was kind of a fresh example of it.
Okay.
And I think there may be some demarcation that we're able to do with utilities that have set public service areas, and maybe at some governance of the Public Utilities Commission. So, I think there may be some parameters we're able to set about, these ones are able to do a franchise, franchises while all the others will fall under a right-of-way ordinance, but...
Great questions. Counsel Draymond?
Well, my question was pretty much already taken up, but I want to expand a little bit. Is there a possibility to do a, you know, in the, in a shorter franchise agreement, you know, five-year or less, for this particular timeframe, is there a way to put in there something based on changes to the ROW ordinance? So, the right-of-way ordinance? I mean, can we, can we do something that says, you know, "Here's the franchise agreement, but as the right-of-way ordinance is developed, things could change." That was just my thought, is, you know, we can tie it, tie it to it since we're developing it right now, I know that would be, might be difficult, but I just thought I'd ask if that could be something we include in our right-of-way, or the franchise agreements?
We can certainly ask for that. One, the flip side of the coin with the franchisee question, of course, is, they got to agree. So, a lot of the times, that's why you see these franchise negotiations go on and on, because one side, you know, there's, there's a bit of an impasse on one or two issues, and you just don't, you don't, never move forward until you, you know, reach a resolution of that. But we certainly can ask. One of the issues that I think we would push for clearly would be if there's anything in the right-of-way ordinance that is clearly not addressed one way or the other in the franchise, which I doubt would happen, by the way, because they're very thorough, but if that would happen, that the franchise ordinance, excuse me, the right-of-way ordinance would apply, that might be one avenue.
I'm going to go back to Counselor Reed, what a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine is perhaps a bit of a pedantic clarification, but I heard in Tuesday's meeting that it was industry standard. I just want to clarify if it was industry standard or Kaiser, this Kaiser tradition. So I.
For the 10 years?
Yes.
I've seen that. I think that's fairly common. I don't, I don't think that that's unique to Kaiser.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't just because we've always done it, but it was an industry standard, which is slightly different, I think. So anyway, again, perhaps pedantic, but I think important.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I heard, just to make sure I heard them correctly, is that as we are moving forward, there's the opportunity to look at the different types of businesses that are operating in our rights of way and to develop a better understanding of which ones, and I like the delineation, the ones that are that have a set service area versus the that does not, the ones that are governed by the Public Utility Commission and those that are not. I think there's a those are maybe two of the delineations to help us frame the conversation about which ones operate better from the, and again, we're looking at from the lens of what is in the best interest of the people of Kaiser. This is the we all own this land. How is it going to be best managed for the benefit of the people of Kaiser? And which ones are governed this way, which ones are governed that way? And I think that'll make us more adaptive because how many of us have seen the changes in our technology and service delivery over the last 15, 20 years that has been very significant will make us more adaptive for the changes in technology that will come down the pipeline or airwaves or however it travels in the future. So I'm looking forward to frame the conversation that way, to understand the the yins and the yangs that go into what the structure is going to look like, learning from other jurisdictions that have developed some successful and models. And then we can look at it from the Kaiser point of view of what do we have here? How are we going to manage our rights of ways so that they can be equitable, accessible? And I also, and I think all of our agreements, we have something that if they're going to tear up our right of way for any sort of repairs and so forth, I know Mr. Lawyer is diligent to get a hold of them when we're working on the road. If you're going to go underground, you better be doing it now because if I just paved this and you come and dig it up, we're going to be having some worries and they're not going to be pretty. Something or something to that effect to preserve the the right of way for the people of Kaiser and save everybody a whole lot of money. And I think that's been a a point of efficiency that has been built in with our Public Works Department for a very long time. So I don't know if everybody else follows our example, but they should. So those are a couple of things I heard. The adaptive to do new technology. If I missed something, please chime in on some of the elements that we believe should be part of the framework for conversation. Did you have another question, Counselor President Starr? I saw your, I saw you wrote something down.
I said for now earlier, have we tried to get franchise agreements with like Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T? I'm just curious why they've not been franchised before? And if you've told me before, I'm sorry, I forgot.
I haven't told you that because I'm pretty new to this discussion, but it looked like something was crossing Attorney Johnson's mind.
Well, with with regard to actual landline connections, no, because that not that I'm aware of that those big operators operate actual landlines. It's the cell company operation. So with regard to AT&amp;T and Verizon, T-Mobile, none of those operators actually own lines in the road. We would have to change the law. They're not required right now unless you adopt a right of way ordinance, they wouldn't be required to to do a franchise. They don't have lines in the road. With regard to some of the ones that Mr. Brown was talking about, there's the electric ones called Calpine that sell to big developers, they are willing to enter into a franchise. Our consultant has checked with them and they'd be willing to pay us under a right of way ordinance. And if we don't adopt a right of way ordinance, we'll be talking to them about entering into a franchise. And that would be true for any other smaller landline companies. There's some, well, as Mr. Brown indicated, Zipley, I think there's, I think New Wave might still be operating, I'm not sure, but there are some smaller landline fiber companies and we would have the right to and we would approach them about entering the franchises. Then that's why we were at that point a couple of years ago, because we didn't do the right of way ordinance, then it's like, well, we should approach them about franchise. But again, those wouldn't affect Verizon and AT&amp;T as as cell companies.
So who would, who are they? Who's paying the space that the AT&amp;T cellphone companies of the world or the Verizon, T-Mobile of the world? Who's paying for the space that they're using?
So and I'll have to preface this remark because it's a little bit of a guess, but Verizon and AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, the cell companies use those landlines and I would expect would pay CenturyLink or maybe they use Comcast lines, I'm not sure how that works, for the wholesale use of that. We may get a fraction of that fraction. We do not have it based on like all the other franchise agreements, the actual based on the user amount. So you can see the 5% is a fraction of that because it's not getting the actual bill that the customer would get if you see where I'm going.
Yep, and I have one more follow up. Thank you.
Counselor.
Where so you mentioned the Walmarts of the world, purchase energy from the open market. If I and I'm going to need a work session on the open market energy world because I that's new to me. Kind of kidding. But where would those non-paying providers of that energy fall? Would they fall under the new right of way ordinance?
Yes, they would. They would need a license under the right of way ordinance. The privatization of energy is isn't new, but it is new. It's not available here to you and I, but when I was in another state and the state deregulated energy, then all of a sudden you have these energy providers calling you and say, hey, I can sell it to you at this rate, this rate, lock it in. And it was variable with the person or the provider that had the transmission lines. So they would lock you in a rate and, you know, we took advantage of that. You pay a fee to the main company, energy company that has all the transmission lines and then my, then it would show on my bill, the provider that I had chosen. So there's, it would be any, any entity that's producing energy and putting it on the grid, they could sell, like Counselor Johnson said, at wholesale.
But they would then fall under the new right of way if we did the and model?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I was, there was examples, I've seen a lot of those telecom providers use, I think it's fine to use this company as a, there's LS Networks is is one company that I worked with on the other side of the state and they are on this side of the state too. They are, their salesman told me they're really the highway of traffic. So they're focused on providing the high bandwidth, long stretch fiber. And they're going to pass a lot of customers in between. They would, in order to sell to the T-Mobils, AT&amp;Ts and the Horizons. And so they had started looking at some of the bigger customers that they were passing underneath, saying, hey, you know, the, the school district, the college, the city are big users. Why, you know, why don't we get them as customers too, rather than just being the super highway for the information?
Thank you.
And one of the things, and to your point, Counselor President Starr, to hear from PGE and from Salem Electric is that when we discussed this a while back, they are required to carry the energy on their lines, but they cannot, they can't control that and they would not, they'd be very open to this conversation to level the playing field, let's put it that way. And I think they can better inform us on what these models look like under the current regulations, no pun intended, and what this could look like for an and model that would be more equitable for, you know, all the users in the right of way. Right, and this is going to be for the framework for further conversations. This is to get everybody back to, back to ground zero, if we will, to understand what we're going to be talking about here. From here, I believe we'll be working to put together the series of work sessions, conversations with our providers, but to come back with additional information on what this can look like and how those conversations will be structured going forward. So I think that was the purpose for this evening, to make sure that we're all clear about what we're talking about and the questions that we have so that our staff members and our utility partners can help inform what this conversation is going to look like. That's how I understood it. And then we'll proceed from here, probably with additional follow up work sessions or and or and. Once we get further along with the model, then we'll have the open houses and public conversation about what this looks like going forward is how I envision, how we will proceed from here. Does anybody have a different or some add-ons to that? Okay, we're good to go forward? Mr. Brown, Mr. Wood, Mr. Johnson, I know you're, you're counting down, but you're going to pass everything to Mr. Lindsay. Okay, who can listen to the tape?
I can.
That's right, and he will. All right, fantastic. Okay, so we've been at this for now, we're going to about to make a big shift. Can we take a couple of minutes to to brain shift and then sit back down for a completely different now for something completely different? So let's go into recess for five minutes.
Oh, good lord. Give me a break, it's January 8.
Unitis is on it, man.
Unitis, okay.
My mortgage interest statement.
Well, you know what? I think I did, I don't know if it was an actual email or it just popped up on the web page when I checked my bank account, but got the same thing.
It is the season.
Well, I don't know if some of these places are starting to not send a paper version.
Yeah.
Is that what's happening?
That's the case for them.
Well, they damn well better be sending a specific email now.
But you know how easy you do that.
My main headache is for the last six, year or two. In addition to ourselves, I'm now doing that for my mother-in-law. Now she has an accountant, but I still have to get these things and they get lost and they have to try to get duplicates.
I've been doing my parents and both of my brothers for years.
Both of your brothers?
And I just quit doing my brothers a couple, maybe a year or two ago. I was doing my nephews.
Wait a minute, their taxes?
Uh huh.
Not just gathering.
No, doing the actual taxes.
Do you have some tax background that I don't know about?
I do have a, a tax preparer working with me, though. She's not anymore. She.
I, I am not a very organized person. So yeah, I told you the joke, but my wife said, we got a little argument about the organization at home. You didn't hear this. We had a little disagreement because we're both messy and disorganized people. Bad when you're both like that. And we got a little discussion about, she goes, well, I don't have Tammy around.
So there.
Yeah. But because you think my office looks bad now, you should see if Tammy wasn't around. But.
It does work better when you have one of each.
One of you, yeah. But what I, what I was going to say is I'm not very organized, but I, my accountant sends me a worksheet. I should have it any day now. It's very around in January, it's a great big folder, it's still paper, hopefully it's still paper. And I put that up on the file, top of the file cabinet and I don't let my wife check the mail. I mean, I literally don't. I go right in, right into worksheet.
The tax folder.
I have my tax folder, too. Yeah. Yeah. I did it for years because one or both of us were always self-employed. I mean, that's my, I mean, that's why I had the accountant. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I'm just going to turn it over to Copeland. I'm just going to turn it over to Copeland.
Are you sporting the Kelly green, but it's not quite the Kelly green, though?
Not, not quite, yes. It's a different color.
I don't have that exact color, but I do like it. That's what...
Are you a Notre Dame fan?
Uh, not so much. Notre Dame's fine. But U of O used to wear more of Kelly green back in the day. That's, that's like what my uncle wore in the eighties when he played offensive line for the Ducks. That was that era and color. U of O pulled those uniforms back for the Pac-12 title game, for example. Kind of, they, they date those to 94, but the similar style was also in the eighties, so.
I like their uniforms.
All right, let's get this right on the show.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those are beautiful. I agree.
And, all right then. Must get coffee or other beverage.
Sprite.
Sprite. All right. Dawn, you good to resume?
Yeah.
All right, council, good to go? All right, let us, we're back in session for part two of the work session for January 8, 2024. And we are now going to be going to our second topic, which is the Kaiser Work After Retirement Policy. And this goes to Mr. Brown, lead off.
Mr. Wood's going to be presenting this tonight. I just wanted to lead off for him. This is something the Oregon State Legislature extended for another 10 years past December 2024. So we wanted to put this issue out in the public space, and so we could, so you could begin to think about it and talk with constituents about it. And we have done a lot of brainstorming as a staff, and we'll give that to the end. But that's just our purpose for bringing it forward tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Madam Mayor, City Council. So we're going to be discussing the Work After Retirement Policy, and I know that sounds really weird to think of people actually wanting to come back after they retire, but they, they do. It's amazing. So to catch you up a little bit, back in July 2021, the City Council adopted a policy at that point to allow employees to obtain normal retirement age under PERS statutes to retire and request to return to work in a limited duration position. I've given you guys a copy of the policy, along with the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the KPA, that you can, as your, your parting gift, that you can take home with you and, and review at your leisure. But that was the policy that we came up with back in 2021. And as I recall, it was a, a little bit of a heated discussion back in the time, because it is somewhat of a, a controversial topic. Really, you started bringing up the issues of the concept of double dipping. Even though the employees who retire and return back to work aren't being paid twice by the City of Kaiser, they are being paid by the state and then also by Kaiser at the same time. So the, the double dipping idea comes into play, and you know, it's not super exciting for a lot of the, the general public. So it can be a controversial issue, so that's why we're bringing it to you now. We're not expecting any kind of decision or guidance tonight. We just want to present it to you, and you can take this and at a later date, we can come back after you've had an opportunity to receive feedback, and we can craft something that, that makes sense. So, under the, the retire, rehire policy, it lets employees who are PERS eligible to retire to come back. Historically, PERS retired employees could do that all along. However, there was a limitation in the hours that they could actually work. So for tier one, tier two employees, they could come back to work and they could work 1,040 hours. For OPSERP, the, the third generation of tier PERS employees, they could only work about 600 hours. So they could work those hours without impacting their retirement benefits. Under this legislation that the state passed, they could come back, work as much as they want to with no impact on their benefits. So that's a, a benefit to the employee. To the employer, we're not required to remit the employee 6% contribution. That employee 6% contribution is paid by the city. So while we call it the employee piece, it's really the employee pickup that's paid by the employer. So we're not required to pay that. So for the people that stick around, we get a 6% cost savings over what we would have had to pay for them. The employer PERS contribution, there is a second piece to PERS, and that's what the employer pays as far as the pension. That piece is not used to calculate towards that specific employee's retirement anymore. That specific amount is now used to pay down the overall obligation that the city has. So we're paying for retirement benefits into the future. Instead of paying specifically for an employee, we're paying to pay down the city's unfunded obligation. So two key financial benefits. We don't have to pay a 6% employee pickup, plus the other employer piece is going to pay down our overall obligation. And hopefully that will result in lower contribution rates into the future. So that's, that's the play. And unfortunately, with the way PERS is structured, it's one of the few benefits or few ways that we can actually pay down our obligation into the future outside of the, the contribution rates that are set every two years. So that, that's what we agreed to back a couple of years ago. So how did it work? As of January 4, 2024, seven out of 18 eligible employees participated in the program, so less than half. The city has saved almost $100,000 by not remitting the 6% employee PERS contribution. So that's 6% cash savings in our pockets. The city has paid $419,000 towards the overall employer pension obligation. At the time that we put this policy into place, the unfunded pension obligation was somewhere between 11 and 13 million. So that's a, a significant pay-down on, on that dollar amount. Unfortunately, the, the investment market has not been super great the last couple of years, so we have seen our obligation rise up to about 18 million. So we're kind of going the wrong way, but it would be 18.5 million had we not had this program in place.
Press pause. The, the pension market, that is not something that the City of Kaiser operates, but that's the state of Oregon. So the, the less-than-stellar performance is not something that the City of Kaiser did, but was through the state PERS. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just want to get that on record.
Thank you.
You would not want me to be your investment manager, that's for sure.
And we don't want to put you into that space when that is not yours, that's not the City of Kaiser's responsibility to operate the PERS pension fund. Okay.
So overall, I would say the, the policy that we've had in place has been somewhat effective. You know, we could have had better participation. However, you know, it is an elective benefit for employees. So that's kind of where we're at as far as what's happened to date. So, we come along this year, House Bill 2296 has extended the provisions of Senate Bill 1049 by 10 years. So the state is saying, okay, this program that we had for a couple of years, we're going to push it out till 2034. The way that we had written our city policies and also the MOU with the Kaiser Police Association, no matter what the state did, we said we're going to stop, have a reset at December 31, 2024. So we're getting towards that time, and we want to start the conversation sooner rather than later. It's up to the City Council, really, to decide whether we want to extend the retire, rehire policy, and if so, what some of the details of that policy should be. So here's a, a chart, kind of shows you a little bit where the cost savings is. You can see that between the top chart and the bottom chart, there's one check mark missing. That's really that 6% employee contribution, so that's where the savings comes in, the direct cash savings. The other piece, as I had mentioned before, is the employer contribution is paid, used to pay down the general obligation not to accrue additional benefits for any specific employee. So, so that's the, the financial aspect of how all this works. So there's some pros and cons to this. This policy allows us to retain experienced staff. This is especially important because majority of the folks impacted are the police department. Out of the seven people that have used this program, five of them were police. When we look into the future for the next couple of years, I believe there's 11 people that will be eligible over the next couple of years, and I believe nine of those are police, maybe even 10 are, are police-related. And this makes sense because the city itself only started with PERS on the administrative side, City Hall side, in 2009. The police department has been with PERS since 1984. So those folks are much more closer to the retirement age. They're also the tier one, tier two employees that this program is really designed to say, "Hey, why don't you think about retiring so we can stop paying you tier one, tier two kind of benefits?" So that, that's kind of what, what we're seeing there as far as a pro, we're able to retain the employees but not have all of the PERS obligations that go along with those. The con is, well, we're retaining some of our most expensive staff. They're typically top step, maximum benefit kind of folks. So there is a cost associated with keeping those folks on for a couple of years. Also, along with that, there's additional accrual payouts upon final retirement. When someone retires with PERS, we have to do a, a complete settlement of all of their paid time off banks. Then when they're with us for a couple more years, those banks build up again, and we have a second payout of some of those. So that, that can be kind of a con when you start thinking about the financial impact. Also, the public perception of the, the idea of double dipping, that's going to be something that, that you folks will have to weigh with your, with your constituents. From an internal standpoint, there is some concern about delays promotional, special duty type of opportunities. If we're retaining some of the more experienced staff longer, that means some of the newer staff aren't getting the opportunities as quickly as, as some of them would like.
I just wanted to add something. Under the retaining the experienced staff, it's not only about retaining experienced staff, but if we look at kind of our national growth trends and birth rates, this is a very practical problem that needs to be solved. There are not as many people in the workforce that are coming into the workforce that are leaving it. So very practically and very broadly speaking, we need the baby boomer generation to be in the workforce a little bit longer because of, there's just not bodies to replace them. So that's from a very global perspective, but it does come right down to this organization. We're fortunate. We have a good reputation. We don't have some of the recruitment challenges that a lot of other organizations do, but that is, it is a factor.
Adding on, on top of that, specific to police departments as well, it's even more challenging to attract and retain police officers. So with this program being specifically, you know, while the police department having a lot of the, the folks that are able to take advantage of this program, it really impacts them a lot more than the rest of the city.
Questions at this point? Yeah, I've got a ton, but real quick, Councilor Housman?
Mr. Wood, why is it that the police department was on PERS in 1984 and administrative staff did not get on PERS until 2009? What's the history there?
By state statute, the police departments and fire departments are required to be PERS. So that was really the driving factor why they had to be back in 1984. And the rest of the city just, I guess, we were slow to come along.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was going to go to Ms. DePina, if that's right with you, if there's some additional information, since I think you were involved with some of this research.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Shortly after I joined the city in 2008, one of the recommendations we discussed as a leadership team was making sure that we had some equality in the retirement programs across the city. And that was at the point in time that we started the discussions with PERS to find out what it would take to transition the rest of the city to PERS. That was not a simple process, and it took us about a year to make happen. But that was, the motivation was to make sure that we were treating all of our employees similarly when it comes to retirement. Back when the police and fire were required to go to PERS, it was an option for other employees, but as long as we had at least a program that provided a certain level of retirement, we could remain with those programs. And that's what the city chose to do at that time.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. DePina.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Kohler, do you have a question?
Well, just to comment, we didn't have very many employees in 1984 either.
True statement. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Wood?
Okay. So some potential policy options to, to consider as you think about this going into the future. There's a lot of options out there. You've, you folks can take no action and let the existing Work After Retirement policy end December 31, 2024. You can modify the policy's duration or terms. You could extend the policy to five, the full 10 years, somewhere in, somewhere in there. You could limit rehires to a limited duration. So if people say, "I want to come back," you can say, "Well, you get six months, a year, two years," something like that. And that, one of the benefits that we didn't throw in is this allows for a coordinated transition. If we have people in key positions, we know their retirement date, you know, up to two years in advance now, as opposed to maybe a month or two weeks in advance without something like this. So there is that benefit as well. We can also look at adjusting some of the, the benefits that are provided when people are rehired, such as limit the accrual caps and what unused paid time off benefits are paid out when they do finally retire. So those are some of the things that you can take into consideration. We have reached out to some of our counterparts at different agencies, and it appears to be a wide range, from folks not doing anything with this to people extending all the way out to 10 years, some not adjusting benefits, some adjusting benefits. So it, there really is no consistent trend at this point that we're seeing. We have a few more folks, a few more agencies to get back to us, but we're not really seeing a, a really super solid trend of this is what everyone is doing. The executive leadership team has gotten together and is making, or getting ready to make a recommendation. Currently, we're saying, "Let's extend it out for five years, then we can revisit the policy at that point and see if, if what's going on still makes sense, given the labor markets, given our financial position, that kind of a thing." Let's limit the rehire period to a maximum of two years. So when someone says, "I want to retire and come back," you get two years. That gives us an orderly transition period. That is helpful, especially when you have positions that are difficult to fill, or the candidate pool is, is difficult at a certain period of time. We're also recommending that we limit the accrual caps and the paid time off benefits to limit the large sum payouts at the end of a, a two-year rehire period. So again, we want to have people come back, but want to have them use their paid time off instead of just accruing it to pay it out at the end. And that way, they're kind of forced to transition some of their responsibilities. So that's our current recommendation. Some of the next steps for you folks, we're requesting that you take some time to review the policy, consider some of the implications, understand that the optics may not be super popular with the general public. It also may not be popular with our internal staff, depending on which, which way we go. The folks that are doing this, making use of this policy, do appreciate the, the opportunity to do that. Also give you folks a chance to ask any follow-up questions that you may have of city staff, clarifications on, on what a policy may look like, obtain some feedback over the next couple of months, or next month from your constituents, and we can come back at a later date and put some meat and potatoes to a policy if that's the direction you want to go. And with that, I would be willing to take any additional questions.
All right. Start with some questions. I put Councilor Reed on the spot last time, so I'll go to this end. And Councilor Duran, do you have some questions lead off, and I will circle back.
Well, this, this last page answered one of my questions, because I was wondering if we could limit the accrual and the payout. So that was something that you guys talked about. What, do you feel that that would negatively impact the people that would want to stay if we were limiting any of the benefits?
Potentially. Obviously, if they have a, a program now that some folks are thinking, "Oh, I just want the same package that people got before," there could be a little bit of... there could be a little bit of grief. However, this is an optional opportunity. We're not requiring anyone to take advantage of this. So I do think we have some opportunities to construct a policy that makes sense for the city.
Yeah, because that was one of the big things when we first started talking about this, is seeing, you know, the lump sum. I know at my company, when I have to do this, it sure hurts to write that big check at the end because it comes out of my pocket, but here it comes out of the city's. Yeah, that was definitely something that I was concerned about, so I'm glad that you guys brought that up.
Definitely a good concern.
Thank you. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Wood, you mentioned in your presentation that hopefully this would have a positive impact on future contribution rates in the form of a reduction. Is there a way that we can get an actuarial projection on what this could do to them? Because I feel like that's kind of a, no fault of your own, right? I mean, it's PERS, but that's kind of a throw the dart at the dartboard with a blindfold on kind of thing. So is that something that, it's that actuarially possible? And that was a big word for tonight.
Wow. I think there's probably some ways that we could look at trying to model this. I'm not an actuary either. They do have some models out there that we can try to enter some data into and see if that would come up with something.
Because we haven't seen the positive impact on our reduction rate to date. It's only been, what, three years? Will have been three years?
Correct, and yeah, I think it's going to be a challenge to, I'll see what I can do. I can't guarantee you anything, but I think there's some ways that we might be able to quantify something out of this. The challenge is, we are fighting the investment returns every year. And with an assumed rate of, I think it's seven points, seven point something at this point, every time we don't necessarily hit that, our rates have an impact. And we're currently not projected to see the rates decrease for at least four to six years currently with the model. So what we're really doing is slowing the growth more than anything else at this point.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
Is there a rehire process? So if the, if some, like, say these 11 eligible people want to take advantage of this, is there a process they go through to do the rehire process? Like, I mean, what if it's not a two-way street?
Councilor Starr, that's an interesting topic and one of the other areas where what different jurisdictions are doing is across the board different. Our model from the current policy was we put a few items in the policy that says you're eligible if this, this, and this. So it referenced your performance evaluation and what level of discipline, if any, would make you eligible. There are a couple of responding entities that actually do a formal recruitment process. We don't currently require that. But we haven't had a situation, for example, in a couple of those places, they've limited to only three rehires. And so if you have two or three people who want to do it, then you have to select. So that's why they do a process. The majority, however, are doing what we've been doing, and many of them, or some of them are continuing to do that, as Tim said, through 10 years. And that is, if you're currently in the position and you're performing well and there's nothing in the policy that we passed that you have a problem with, you have that opportunity to make that request. One of the things we talked about when we prepped this policy last time was making sure that we were equitable in providing it to any employee if that is our intent. And that's the way we wrote the policy that's in place right now. We can, like we said, put some limits if we choose to on what we do for the future.
Great. Thank you. Anything further? Not at the moment. All right. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sure that the moment will come, Councilor Starr. For those that argue against double dipping, what's the difference between them hiring back on here and hiring somewhere else? And so, I mean, that's my easy argument. But along with that, then I have another question. Do we rehire at the same pay and the same vacation and the same other benefits that we were paying them? And that, that might be something we have to look at.
Sure, that is one of the plays that we have to consider. When we're retaining these folks, we typically hire them back at whatever step they were currently at. So they typically are the top step. So you do have an opportunity if you say, we're not going to play this with this program. When these folks retire, you are hiring typically more junior staff at a lower pay rate. So yeah, that is a balance to consider. Good question.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one of my clients that they end up with their employees that are there, have been there for 20 years. They end up with eight weeks of vacation a year. And if we have somebody that we're rehiring that are getting six or eight weeks of vacation a year, that's a pretty hard pill to swallow.
Ms. DePina, do you want to respond on the benefits after returning?
Certainly. We do have some things we have to take into consideration with the passage of equal pay legislation. So it is, it would be very difficult for us to bring somebody back with 15 and 20 years of experience and not pay them at the top step. However, there is the room for some adjustment when it comes to the accruals and the usage and the payout. And so we're trying to take a measured approach to that where it makes sense from an equity perspective to bring somebody back still earning, for example, vacation at the same level as when they went out. But we could put a control on that and say, you have a different cap than existing employees. So we're not taking away that time, but we're requiring them to actually use it and not have a big payout at the end.
Right.
Same thing with sick leave.
Use it or lose it policy.
Yes.
And I feel better about that. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. DePina, could you remind us what the retirement clocks are for various employees? Just when, when in the career these are coming into play?
Councilor Housman, that is a very interesting question because it certainly depends on each employee. There is a chart, I have to admit, I don't have it memorized, but the public service employees, police and fire, have an earlier time that they can go out under full benefits than the rest of the employees. And there are different timelines for Tier One and Tier Two and OPSERP. That said, what is more difficult to guess is what our individual employees' clocks are. Because we have employees that have been eligible to retire for years and choose not to. We have very few employees that are counting down the days until the moment that they can retire. So then it becomes a question of, for their family, for their life, for their situation, what makes the most sense for them? And I, you know, I keep track of what employees tell me their plans are, but I can't tell you how many I've got on my little confidential sheet that says may retire in the next six months to a year, and I keep moving it forward every year because they changed their mind.
Sure. Quick follow-up. Tier One, Tier Two is just based on date of hire, right? As far as when they were able to accrue PERS benefits based upon?
Correct.
That's any, okay.
However, I would clarify that it's their date of hire in state or local government, not their date of hire with us. So if we hire a Tier One employee from another entity, we now have that person as a Tier One employee in our midst.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple of my thoughts. First of all, I was thinking along same lines of, as Councilor Kohler, that this is not an unusual practice to retire and work someone else, somewhere else, especially among public employees. And I guess too, just the term double dipping, they're not double dipping. They're being paid by the city of Kaiser, and then they're being paid by PERS. So it's, the criticism of double dipping isn't really accurate, right?
I would concur.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that and just kind of make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. One question I would have for Mr. Wood and Ms. DePina. On the benefits, I know for a lot of us boomer types, and I resemble that remark, the motivation to keep on working had one common theme, and that is Medicare-eligible because the cost of medical insurance prior to age 65 is, let's just say, prohibitive. And a number of folks hang on till they, till not just they, but their spouse, significant other, hit that magic age, and then it's sayonara, baby, for a lot of folks. So part of it is when people are eligible by years, but I think that we are hearing from many sectors, and I'd like you to weigh in, that that health insurance issue is a significant one for the retirement plans for people. So when we're looking at the rehire back, and this was on Section 4 of the current policy on the benefits, are we looking at a range of options or from the leadership team on what we would offer folks? Or are we looking to stay with, because it says here, health and dental insurance will be based on retiree rates, with the city covering the same percentage cost as applicable to regular status employees in the same or comparable classifications? Is that, the short way of saying it, they still get their healthcare benefits with the same co-pay that they used to have?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. That's what I need to know. It was a long way to say a short thing. I do have one other question. You were talking about the balance between orderly turnover, promotional opportunity, and then the generational transition and so forth. So what I'm hearing from, the recommendation from staff, is to strike a balance there to ensure that we continue to have an orderly transition from one generation to the next without a wholesale exodus. But to not let, to not facilitate people remaining in place, you know, for like full 10 years, whereas like, we really do need to facilitate a healthy turnover.
Transition.
Transitions. So is that where the five years comes from? It's like, let's look at this, let's, and the two-year, because the two-year is what we're doing right now. So are you recommending that because what you're seeing right now is working?
So from an individual employee's standpoint, we're looking at retaining a two-year period, which is having the program available for five years. So that'll give us kind of a balance. We won't be revisiting this all the time. Yet we'll have a long enough period that we'll have some additional information to be able to come back and say, hey, does this still make sense or doesn't make sense? However, it still provides with that two-year limit on an individual basis the opportunity for an organized transition as well as not retaining people forever.
And then I've got one more question, and that's on the collective bargaining agreements, the terms regarding the benefits. So the two union agreements we have right now, they're good with the current setup. So if we are looking at, and making any changes, well, that will also have to go to an MOU with our two unions, correct?
I'll speak to that one, Mayor Clark. We only have one MOU at this memorandum of agreement at this time with Kaiser Police Association. I presented the information to the other union, and they saw no reason to worry about an MOU. So, but you are correct that if we change the policy, revise it, do whatever, we will need to establish another, and I would again reach out to the other union.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Duran, do you have a question?
Yeah. You know, I was thinking about, you know, we got budget coming up. Is, could we put together a budget on keeping people at the same rate of pay, like we're talking about, and what it would be if the retirees left and we brought in employees at a lower rate of pay? What that would do to the impact on our budget over the next few years? Because, just a hypothetical. Because, you know, if I could see a huge cost savings in allowing people to move on and bring in new people in at a lower rate, you know, maybe I'd be inclined to look that direction. So that's just, just thinking budget.
Sure, I could take a swing at that. There's going to be a lot of assumptions that I'm going to have to make.
I'd imagine.
Don't hold me accountable to it.
But I would agree, Councilor Duran, that some modeling, and that's what went into our initial decision to adopt this policy a couple of years ago, was exactly that. We were looking at the cost benefit to our general fund as well as the benefit to our employees. But there was a, and we saw clearly there was some cost savings at $100,000 in what we didn't pay into the PERS accrual. And anything that can help our general fund with the PERS liability. And I just want to follow up. There was a comment made earlier that, the other thing about the contrib, I love the word, contribution rates. It sounds like it's optional. It's not. The contribution rates, and for people who are just listening to the audio, yes, that's air quotes, are set by the state, and they are not optional. They are required, and they come straight out of our general fund. So it's an underfunded mandate that takes from the general fund, which is parks, planning, police. It's the basic services, and that's where this money is going to come out. And we don't get a chance to say, hmm, I'm not feeling it, or, you know, I'd rather spend that someplace else.
Negotiation.
There is no negotiation on that. That is a requirement. So I think it's really important to keep in mind that our finance staff, our HR staff, has been looking at options that give us some flexibility to save something in our general fund as the PERS wave continues to move through, and I know it's primarily Tier One, Tier Two. OPSERP doesn't have the same structure. It doesn't have the same requirements. It's a, Ms. DePina, I always get this wrong. One's a guaranteed benefit, the other one is a guaranteed contribution. Okay. So I just want to get that one out there. Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. I want to express appreciation to the executive leadership team. We're thinking this through very carefully and having lots of discussion about it. And we have, this option of keeping the retirees and rehiring them is a balance, balancing act because it's a forced discipline, and it's a, we're forcing ourselves to pay down that UAL by that same contribution rate, which is approaching 30%. We're paying towards the UAL when the other alternative is, we don't have to pay that, that rate towards the UAL. We can get somebody new and have a new obligation, but it, so it's less money now. And that's the hard part to balance, is we need the money now, definitely. But paying down that unfunded accrued liability is also important. So that's why there's a limited duration. And we can get within a pretty good ballpark on, with our own modeling and some tools the state has.
I think that's partly why this came back with legislature because this has been benefiting some jurisdictions, and they wanted to be able to extend that benefit for the general funds, excuse me, over a longer period of time because the Tier One, Tier Two tsunami is still not finished yet and needing to ride it out to the end of that wave when we stop seeing the increase in Tier One, Tier Two retirees. And I think that's what, approximately 2032-ish? Have you on the ish? Okay, I'm going to head nod.
It seems about right.
Okay. I seem to recall that from a work session in the past. So any other questions for tonight? And then, oh, Mr. Johnson, did you have something?
Yes, it's not on this topic, or?
Oh, yes. So want to wrap this one up, and then we'll go to Mr. Johnson. The next step, so you were asking us to come and talk to staff members with additional questions, concerns, ideas. So I would encourage counselors to please reach out to our, our staff leadership team to make sure that if you have any additional questions, a thought popped up in the middle of the night, that you can get that answered. Don't call them in the middle of the night. Sorry, sorry, Dan. Counselor Kohler. Make, make a little memo. But then, the plan is to come back in either work session, or did you want to bring this policy for consideration and adoption in about a month? Based on what feedback you get from council, what's the plan?
Yeah, we want to gauge it based on the feedback we get from you. So please talk with the people in your circles, because all your circles are different. And we want to hear the broad range of feedback that each of you have so that we can craft something that would be acceptable.
Okay. And again, not among ourselves, because serial meetings would be a really bad idea, and they're really illegal. So please reach out to staff members with your thoughts, concerns, ideas, and so forth, and then they will compile to bring this back to us at a later date. If there's a need for another work session, we will do that. Otherwise, we'll see a revised version of the recommended policy. We'll come to City Council at a City Council regular session near you. All right. So we will put a bow on this, this topic at the moment. Mr. Johnson, you want to bring some information to us tonight on another topic?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, and I know we don't have other business under the work session. But I, I wanted to clarify a statement I made at the last meeting regarding the, the name of the community rooms change, and apologize if there's any misunderstanding in that statement. There was a very brief item in the Kaiser Times about it. Counsel President Starr had stated that there was consensus by council on the name change in the work session we had on that topic, and that's accurate. I stated that there was consensus at the work session, but I also stated that there did not appear to be much discussion or consensus at the regular meeting where the actual resolution, the first resolution, was adopted. And therefore, since we wanted to be sure about it when we came back, and we had to correct the resolution anyway, when we came back, we wanted to put that in there and make sure council was aware of that. So I indicated that. Unfortunately, the newspapers and perhaps some others kind of misunderstood my intent and took it as contradicting Counsel President Starr, and that certainly was not my intent. I actually agreed with her that there was pretty clear consensus at the work session about that topic. And so the newspaper kind of truncated that a bit, and it made it appear that I was contradicting Counsel President Starr. And again, that was not my intent. So I would apologize to Counsel President Starr and any others who might have misunderstood my intent on that. So I apologize for that.
Thank you. Counsel President Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I don't think any apologies were needed on your part, but I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Thank you all for a very productive session. The time is 7:55, and we are adjourned.